Oh, I thought you said it was cold that happened. It's okay. It's Toby Rita.
He smells like sweat and running away.
Oh, but I want to go again?
Yeah. This is, uh... The coffee I drank. Which is in road.
And I know that.
Which is in road. And I'm there today. And I talked with the R.
Hi.
And this is about the... The law of the county. We got news. John, is he done with tape?
Yep. I'm gonna send him a letter. I'm not gonna send him a letter.
Okay. You're welcome.
So you're gonna clean them all up and down?
He said, "Take care of God, didn't he?" God is over. Camper is over.
Yeah.
He said they're gonna be careful camper.
Well, he said this is on junkyards. He said this is on junkyards.
Huh?
He said this is on junkyards.
You better be.
Well, we're gonna do more. We're gonna do more. It's that.
Sue me in in just a second. It's almost coming up. Wait for her. She said just a minute.
That's some pretty quiet stuff going on.
Just make sure, yeah, just pull that way so I can...
Yeah, our business stuff, yeah.
How are you feeling, Lee?
How am I feeling?
Yeah. I heard.
How many people we have in this room?
How many can we have?
We have it in this room.
Eighteen.
Sorry about that.
I'm fine.
But anyway, how are you?
I didn't know you were ill. No, this is just the lens cap for the... Thank you.
Are you coming in? Oh, sure.
Wish maybe you could help me later, because I can't find it.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm moving in.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna... Can you take this chair over that way?
Yeah, but I think we're gonna need more chairs.
I can swivel it.
I can swivel it.
Well, should I get this back a little?
Yeah, or you can actually run a table or whatever.
Put it where?
I can... Am I in the way yet?
How old are you?
I'm thirty.
Oh, this is...
I'm good.
Christine, could we pledge allegiance to the flag?
We can.
I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, Mary.
You used to. No, don't be sorry. You should always do it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Letters for the Department Heads for Budgets. You want me to get that sent out?
Yes. Yeah.
I put something in your mailbox from the Historical Society. Was it an invitation?
It was an invite from them for you to attend a meeting they're having on Wednesday at seven at the library. And they just wanted to make sure that you were all invited. To talk about the 250th birthday. And anybody's invited to go, the northern area, I think.
What time is it?
Seven.
Seven o'clock. At the library.
Excuse me, Royce. He wanted to know if we can open the window for air. Thank you.
It's probably gonna get hot in here.
Yes, probably. Thank you.
Oh, these are applications for interested people in the planning board. Jen had left them on, I guess. Does, um... Are they looking for us to appoint them?
Well, I think the first one's a conflict of interest to me. I don't know who is it. Well, he's not a resident. He only own... He just bought land here. And he wants to be on the planning board to me, but I don't know. He's not a resident yet. I'm not sure how I feel about it.
Christine, can I ask a question about that? I was just told by somebody else who was interested that you don't have to be a resident to be on the planning board. It's not a requirement, which I thought was odd, but that's what I'm hearing.
You might not have to, Mary, but you still have to choose and pick and feel comfortable with it, too.
Right.
Well, it would be a selection of properties, something that he was representing or had in the past.
Yeah.
Would you read this to us? This is from Jen. And I sent these things to Mary last week. You had asked about the franchise agreement.
Yeah, I have my note back from her.
Oh, okay.
All right, so what do you two think about the planning board? Because it looks like they need a full board, a full, one full member.
I think if we get any discussion personal stuff about them, then what would I think of it other than that?
Well, I think Jen's just looking for appointment. These people are interested.
We should probably discuss it.
And one of those is full member, they want? Is that what you said? Yes. One full member? One full member, which is what she wrote.
So you want me to just send it? Or I'll discuss it in executive? Michael?
Yeah.
And I have a request from the resident, Roland. He thinks his assessment is too high. It went up this year. But you guys had gone over and checked it. Checked his house.
Did he not do that in abatement form?
He didn't.
So I think...
He was looking... Well, he's looking... Okay. I will... I'll get an abatement form to him, but I think he was more interested in having you look at it to see if maybe it was just assessed too high, not necessarily to get an abatement.
Everybody else needs to do an abatement form on the same kind of question.
Yeah, I think just to keep the paperwork.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. The same, having to do an abatement form and then looking to take a peek with the abatement form and follow through, just...
Yeah, if we've already been there once or twice, I'll be there.
Okay. And then the other stuff I got is when Ben comes, so... Unless you guys have something before that. Norm wanted to talk to you for a minute about the NIAID before John comes. Or I don't know if it was when John is here or it doesn't matter.
Last time, I guess not before John.
Okay.
Really?
I don't know.
Okay.
Here is... These are letters that I got from you today. That one's for you. That's for Paul. From Amy. And I'm not Smagula from DES in New Hampshire. Have you heard from her?
I don't know.
Smagula.
Smagula, thank you. And, um... So she's sending this in support of an integrated aquatic plant control effort to control invasive NIAID, including use of an aquatic herbicide in the above referenced water bottles. And so she sent along the attached paper. You must have a copy of that.
We do.
I have got some interpretation from the lawyers, which is good news, about NIAID. So I will go over that when he gets here to DEP. If you want to, it happens first, so...
Sure.
That's great.
All right. Well, you know who I am. Name is Norman Terrier. As of September 1st, I had once again become president of the Three Pond Protective Association. So I'm here to address you on behalf of the Three Pond Protective Association. We're in the TPPA. Controlling NIAID is... And I asked for five minutes. I'm trying to breathe. Controlling a NIAID is gonna be costly. And it's gonna require many years. But the cost of not controlling it is far greater than the cost of controlling it. There's no way that we're gonna be able to control NIAID without funding from the towns. It means that the boards of selectmen are gonna need to ask the towns to appropriate funds. We think that needs to start in 2017. Not only did you have to ask the towns, but if you have any chance of getting the towns to support funding, I think the boards are gonna have to support that. So that the question that they vote on says supported by the selectmen, three yes, no, no, zero, you know, that kind. It needs support from the selectmen, so we need your help. But more than that, we think that we think that it would be very helpful if we could get a declaration from the board of selectmen, and we're asking you to do that. A declaration of your intention to ask the town people to appropriate funding. As soon as I can, I'll be out. Be making the same request to the selectmen from Milton. Why such a declaration? Couple of reasons. One is to promote a sense of public confidence that the towns are serious about controlling this NIAID in the face of plants like it. The second is giving them a sense that we have a chance if we feel that we can control it. Because we don't want people to be discouraged and say, "This is always me. This is a calamity. We're not gonna be able to control it. Property values are gonna go down." We think we can control it. It's gonna be quite a lot. Second reason for the declaration is that the main DEP and the New Hampshire DES in the next couple of months will be making decisions as to whether or not to give us grant funds in controlling the NIAID. And a declaration by both boards of selectmen to support asking the towns for money will be helpful in maximizing the amount of awards that they'll give us. No town has been successful at fighting aquatic plants without strong support, leadership from the towns, and money from the towns. And one of the factors that they consider in granting funds is that the amount of support. They consider that, and they consider whether the town has a lake association, which we do. And they consider our past performance, which has been good. And so we think we can get the maximum amount of grant funds if we can show the towns behind the effort.
Get grants from the state of New Hampshire?
Grants from the state of New Hampshire and from the state of Maine.
Okay.
I suspect...
Is there a pact with somebody from the state of Maine?
We have... We... Actually, John McFederman is the principal, I think, who'll be involved in the decision-making on grants for Maine. And that may not be true. He's the head coordinator of the Invasive Species Program.
Well, as it happens...
Maybe it gets administered through the lakes association, but I can't...
As it happens, we have a need coming up with him.
Well, I know that.
At thirty, so...
I know that. I know that.
Hopefully, we're here. He has something for both of you guys.
And we've already made an application for grant funding from DES, which is New Hampshire. Only because their announcement of the grants came out now. And the main one will come out in...
How much are they willing to put up?
We don't know.
You don't know yet?
No. What we do is we give them what we think is the cost of the project. We give them how much we think we can... We would support. We would prepare to provide matching funds. They then decide who to portion the funding to. Last time we were here, remember, I asked the question of John and Denise Blanchett, who was with him? What kind of grants money are we talking about? You know, and she said, "Well, it's anywhere from $2,000 to $30,000." We don't know what it'd be for us. But they have it helpful.
I understand.
They have it. So... So there's that. So we actually have a declaration now. I've prepared a... I've actually prepared a template. It's something that you can use. And you can choose to make it like it is. I've also got a sheet that I'm gonna hand out to you and give to you when you use, which summarizes costs that we're talking about. And I know that you're gonna have a lot of questions, and I didn't plan to spend... I have to spend a lot of time of your time today, but I'm prepared to meet with you at any time at your convenience to answer any questions you have. But let me read the declaration for Milton, for Lebanon. So it's entitled, "Declaration of Support for Controlling Invasive Aquatic Plants" on Milton Three Ponds. Make sure I got the right one here. Whereas an uncontrolled infestation of invasive aquatic plant and invasive aquatic plant in Milton Three Ponds will likely cost a substantial loss of waterfront property tax dollars and a loss of tourism dollars. And whereas controlling this invasive plant will take several years, possibly generations. And whereas the annual costs appropriately chargeable to Lebanon to control the plant are expected to be less than one-tenth of the annual property tax revenue loss, the Lebanon Board of Selectmen hereby declares its intention to ask the townspeople to appropriate funds annually starting in 2017 to bring and to keep invasive aquatic plants under control. This declaration is made in anticipation that the Milton Board of Selectmen will make a similar declaration applicable to Milton and that both boards will work as partners to reach an agreement on the percentage of the annual control cost that is appropriately chargeable to each town. That's the kind of a declaration that I think would be helpful whenever I ask for it. The sheet. I'll quickly summarize. First thing is, this is called estimates of economic impact. First line is annual costs of not controlling the NIAID. That's very important to them. We expect that there will be a 10% to 16% loss of tax revenues from waterfront properties. What's that mean for Lebanon? You can do the math. Based on 2015 tax bills, waterfront properties in Lebanon approximately raised approximately $600,000, slightly under that. So a 10% to 16% loss of those revenues would be $60,000 to $96,000. Pay a chunk of money. In Milton, the numbers are higher. Milton tax... Waterfront property taxes in 2015 were approximately $2 million, slightly under that. So they stand to lose $200,000 to $320,000 if these estimates are right. About 24% of the total loss will be compared to the default by Lebanon. At Lebanon, 76% will be... Remember those two numbers, 24 and 76? Now, the next one is the annual cost to control the NIAID. We think, based on the experience of this year, that if we are able to use herbicides and divers, use herbicides only on the large dense infestations, they also... Elsewhere, use divers, that we can get control of this thing for $40,000. If we're required to use herbicides, that number will be $90,000. Think that the amounts will... And so the question is, how much are we gonna need from the towns? That depends on how much we get for grants. It depends on how much TPPA will provide. TPPA has the money. Know about that. And we're prepared to provide as much as is needed. But when you look at it, when you look at the program from year to year to year to year and recognize it's gonna take place from year to year to year, you can think of TPPA as one who can provide something like $6,000. You just don't make that kind of money to be able to support this kind of program. So if you assume $5,000 from grants and $6,000 from TPPA, you're looking at trying to appropriate $29,000 from the towns if we use herbicide. And $79,000 if we don't. If we decide that it's appropriate to charge 124% of that, that would mean $6,960 from Lebanon. And it would mean $22,500 from Milton. Now, these numbers are only approximations, but they're ballpark. They acquaint you with the size of the problem and the size of what we're talking about. We think they're realistic. That really concludes what I had to say. I'm sure there'll be a lot of... You'll have a lot of questions, a lot of discussions.
You have some coffee to lose, right?
I have to look at it. I do. I work for each of you.
If it's on the three plants, correct? Are there any other places for this right now in our yard?
We found it in a small pond, which is just south of the dam. And I understand that it was also found in 2015 on a couple of ponds in New Hampshire, Northwood. I think Northwood Land, the Lake of Pond.
What extent is falling? What extent of this year of NIAID?
I don't know. I don't know. All I saw was a report from Lori Callahan from Yaw County, invasive aquatic species project. It says that they found it.
They've got a lot of the other plant. That one is...
Well, they've got the... They've got the variable milkford.
Yeah.
This is something that's just going to take over our ponds, do you think? I'm just curious.
Yeah, we believe so.
I don't know much about it. Yeah?
Animals.
They travel through the rivers and... Obviously, Samhain Falls connects those ponds.
Easily spreadable.
By boats, right?
Lot of seeds. It's fragments. Easily carried by boats. Moose, ducks, geese.
I guess it kind of...
And so they're a great concern with spread prevention. It grows fast. We know, we've seen it.
I remember, right? You said that even just propellant chomping the plant will spread it. It doesn't necessarily have to have seeds.
Sure, and it will grow from fragments. Fragments will... That's what we believe. John McFederman from the DEP is here, and he's a... Think you're a marine biologist, you know? You're an aquatic biologist? Aquatic biologist, so he knows all about that stuff.
Thank you.
Well, what I hear, too, if I got in front of me, if the kids doing their play in the summertime, they get gonna tear it up and spread it faster. And if it is spread so much, the property values are going to decline. So it has to be addressed now. Should probably have been addressed before because they get found in front of me. And I'm down by front of shows. So now we got all the kid playing in front of front of shows. How far is that gonna spread? And how fast? Probably faster than it is now. Between them, more or less. They're got to be addressed.
I just wanted to say, I shared with Mary. I didn't know much about NIAID. I was worried about the chemicals in the water, and I've been talking to a lot of people about it. I think I've talked to these fellows before about it. My cousin went down to Sudbury, Massachusetts last week, right, Mary? She took some pictures of this pond in Sudbury called the Old Grist Pond in Sudbury, and she was sending them to me, and she's saying how horrible the water was. And I was blowing them up to look. Sure enough, it's NIAID in that pond. And I asked her if she had ever heard of NIAID. And she said, yes, the environmental people who were there for the weekend with her said that this was NIAID. So she goes every year to this function there at the pond, and she showed me pictures for the last three years on that same pond, which I shared with Mary. And I'm gonna tell you something, in three years, that pond has gone from clear, clean, beautiful water to the point where the photographers on this weekend couldn't, they have like a whole colony of swans that live on that pond, and they couldn't get like, you know, the optimum reflection, which is what photographers are worried about. But they couldn't get any reflection of these birds because it is so thick with this NIAID. In three years' time, it has gone from clear, beautiful water to completely overgrown with this stuff. So, you know, me as being as skeptical as I was, I've kind of changed my opinion now after seeing the difference in this grist mill pond in Sudbury, Mass. over three years' time.
Carl Strether, John's here.
We're gonna have the chair over here, John. Is that okay?
I have some information too, which might be helpful to all of you guys. Our interpretation of our no-spray ordinance. So, I'm just gonna read what Lori had sent us. So, we're all on the same page. It says, "I have reviewed the toxic waste ordinance, which prohibits commercial spraying for non- agricultural reasons of herbicides in Lebanon unless approved by town voting me. It is my understanding that the DEP wishes to treat Milton's pond with a herbicide to control the spread of European NIAID. The treatment involves injecting the herbicide into a lake through a hose from a vessel. The language of the ordinance does not apply to this situation. First, the state agency uses the herbicide, and it is not commercial use. Second, the injection of the herbicide into the lake would not be considered a spraying under the common definition of spray because the ordinance does not contain any definition of spray the common definition is used. In addition, it is arguable that the statutory scheme of establishing a lake assessment and protection program prohibits local ordinances, although this direct question has not been determined by a court. There are some issues that separate the program from the argument made in the CMP case. Here, the DEP is directed by statute to take action to control invasive plants, including the use of chemical and biological material. To answer your question, it appears that the DEP could treat the lake with a herbicide without town meeting approval." I think that was our biggest question, is could we do it without town meeting approval? We could, according to our lawyers. So that's a, that's a good, that's a good start that we don't need to.
Very good.
Yeah, that's a good step. So now we don't have to worry about the no-spray ordinance for this.
Terrific.
And we have that written, writing too, so that's a good, good step, I think, for the town and for, for us to make sure we get a grip on the NIAID.
And people have, and people have to understand that you don't need a town vote on it, it is stated.
Yes.
And.
Hi, Christine, thank you for having me on the show. Paul, you're with. Hi. So you received that from.
From the insurance.
The insurance. And I guess the only, I remember last time when we were here discussing it, we discussed question, if you were to ask the town attorney what the town attorney's response would be, and there was still some question in my mind, if the town attorney said the ordinance does not apply, does the select board concur with that? Or is the select board still see the need to go to a town vote? What I get from you, from your comment, was that it's not the case. But I just wanted to confirm that here so that there's not a question going forward.
For me, as far, we haven't really sat down to discuss it because we're waiting for more information, but for, me and we can discuss it now, but you know, I think we need to move forward. The money part would have to be voted on by the people. If we decided, you know, we're gonna have to put money out there to help, do that, that's what we've got to draw on the people. But as far as my support, and I'm not sure how you two feel, but I think, you know, we're gonna have to get a grip of waterfront property too. I mean, we did just reassess them and re-tax them, and we can't just leave them out there hanging to get ruined and then go backwards. So I think, you know, what do you guys think?
We deserve my opinion for now. I want to hear more about what you, what can you tell us about what the state's gonna do? What's that part gonna be in reality?
This year, because we could not use herbicide, we hired a professional diver assist at Suction Harvester, and $30,000 was spent on that. And we maybe got, I haven't looked at the maps fully yet, but maybe we got 40% of a very dense infestation. An area that we, we could have managed with herbicides for probably a fifth of the cost. Now, I want to point out.
Forty percent of the whole pond.
No, I'm talking about 40% of just that. Do you recall last, when we met, I remember, not last meeting, the previous meeting, we had maps showing the northeast shore of Milton's pond where it's most densely infested. It's that area I'm talking about.
Okay.
The main DEP's priority for herbicide use is response to new infestations at rapid response, when you can actually knock them back and use other measures to control them, mechanical measures to control them. Herbicide use is not something that we recommend lightly. There are risks of using the herbicides, they have to be used according to the label. It's not something that we just jump into. Yeah, the approach, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We spoke a little bit, I remember before you had mentioned about how fast this herbicide will dissipate. It will become less harmful, or become not harmful at all.
Yes, I have, I have the information here, I can look that up.
If you had to do, if we had to do the whole pond, and we can talk generally, that's fine. If we had to do the whole pond, mainly New Hampshire involved, everybody, the towns, Milton, and Southern. If we had to do the whole pond, how well will that herbicide be controlled? Because you're gonna have towns everywhere down below downstream from us that are gonna be wondering.
We're not going to be, the proposal would not be to herbicide the whole pond. The proposal would be to herbicide that portion where it's very densely infested. And the, any, any, any management is gonna be a combination of, if herbicides are permitted, herbicides, use of divers to remove the plants, as we did this year, and possibly laying barriers on the bottom, bottom barriers to smother in some areas. There will be an integrated approach using different methods. We're not by any means proposing to herbicide the entire pond. It's that northeast portion of the pond. There was additional infestation found on the New York place this year, Norm, I think, on the, on the New Hampshire side of northeast pond. It's possible that we would treat a section there also. But the area we're gonna treat this year, if we had permission, was 40 acres of, and northeast is about 680. And the whole system is almost 1,000 milton three ponds. So just to put that in perspective of the fraction of the whole pond system we're treating, you may recall also that we had, well, actually, no, we didn't discuss this here. I was thinking about our discussions with the town of Berwick and the city of Summersworth, New Hampshire, because we were required to get written consent from downstream water suppliers. We met, we had two meetings with each of those municipalities and received written consent letters. They, our, we had hydrologists with the main drinking water program look at where we were going to treat and the likelihood of any detectable concentration getting down to those drinking water supplies. And it was point, ten zeros and then something, very low likelihood. And it's probably unlikely that we would have even detection limits at the Milton Dam because of the amount of water in the system. If we're treating 40 acres and we're talking about 1,000 acres of, I'm not talking volume here, I recognize I'm talking surface area, but we are treating a relatively small portion, so it's unlikely we'd even get detectable levels there. This Spalding Pond infestation is worrisome because it has moved downstream. The question about the extent there, it's, as far as we can tell, it's relative limited extent. We found one patch, we actually, one of our divers went out last week with two group surface people, and we removed the locations in Spalding that had been found. Does that mean it's gone from Spalding? No, probably not because of the problem with the seeds. But we're hoping that can be kept under control with divers. But even so, so there's more surveying that needs to be done between Milton, between Milton Three Ponds and Spalding, there's more surveying that needs to be done downstream of Spalding. We will, we have asked the hydrologists to rerun the numbers, rerun the model. Let's say it shows up in Spalding gangbusters, and we decide we need to treat it this year. We need to, we need to get consent now again for treating, what about four river miles downstream from Berwick? Or try to get consent from Berwick and Summersworth. So we're gonna run that model again to see what those concentrations show.
We also, we have a large, from what I understand, very large concentration of milfoil in Spalding also, and I'm wondering if, how those two plants will compete with each other. Will the milfoil, the amount of milfoil that's there actually hold back the growth of the NIAID?
It could. There's, Spalding has, down the south end of Spalding, it's pretty steep, steeply sloping shorelines with not a lot of plant growth of any plants in any kind, but in the north end of Spalding, very shallow, weedy, lots of native plants and plenty of milfoil too. So it may have a little bit of a hard time getting going there. Yet, I've seen, I only know, I've only been to two ponds with European NIAID. One is a small pond in Kittery, five acres and northeast. And I've seen plenty of ponds with variable milfoil, Eurasian water milfoil, hydrella, curly leaf pond weed. It's impressive at how competitive European NIAID is. I don't know which plant would win that battle. It would, it would put up a pretty big fight. But I think it came back to your, maybe original question was partly what the state is going to be able to do. So I wanted to recap, we spent $30,000, $20,000 of that is coming from Maine, $10,000 from New Hampshire this year. And going forward, I know that, at least I believe, that Milton Three Ponds has applied for a New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services grant.
TTPA has.
TTPA, TTPA has. And our, our grant timelines aren't in sync. They, they're already accepting applications. We are reviewing last year's reports, and we'll be getting our applications out. And Wayne Sylvester is on the email list, and I believe you are too. Both Norm and Wayne are on the email list to receive the grant application when we get that out. And there will be grant money available. I cannot tell you how much grant money will be available this year. But there will be, it's a competitive grant process.
What happens if it's voted down by the people? All the money.
Oh, the money's voted down by the people?
We're still trying to figure out how much Lebanon's contribution will be.
Yeah. Supposedly the people voted down.
The, the Milton Three Ponds has applied, will, has applied for grant money from New Hampshire, will apply for grant money from Maine, will get some grant money from each entity, I can't tell you how much. So there will be some money to work with. And at that point, I mean, I think Norm has done an excellent job of lining out approximate costs. We have, I have in here somewhere the approximate cost of what the herbicide treatment would have been. My point is that we will prioritize, we'll work with Milton Three Ponds in prioritizing, thank you, work with Three Pond, Milton Three Ponds in prioritizing how that money should be spent. If, if Norm's estimate of $40,000 proves to be an accurate number, yeah, I've got it here, then we will prioritize what, how that money should be spent.
I'm gonna add to that. Say, if Lebanon votes no on appropriating funds, and the town of Milton votes no, then we're probably dead in the water if it wasn't for TTPA. TTPA has been for several years putting away anything that aren't our costs. We're a nonprofit organization, we're all volunteers. We've been putting away funds in anticipation that someday we may be able to invasive plants. We think that at the end of this year, we'll probably have $28,000 in that one. We think that we probably can get, or increase it by $6,000 next year with contributions. TTPA membership used to be about 105 families from among 500 or so property owners. Small percentage. This year, the country, the membership rose from 105 to 160, largely because of the concern for the NIAID. The contribution level has gone up. So we think we can safely say that we will probably be able to provide $6,000 every year from year to year to year. If we can't get money, money from the town in 2017, our only alternative will be to use up everything that we've got. Go. Second, we'll be throwing money down our anthill probably because we really have to expect, this is not a one-year program. This is a multi-year program. So the question is every year.
You don't even know how many years at this point, do you? There's not even a rough estimate.
So the funds that are available now, the question, another question might be, well, why doesn't TTPA take on the whole thing for 2017 and not burden the towns with money? We don't think that would be very wise. Because it's a multi-year, long-term program. We think we should keep that fair amount of that money as a safety net. The $40,000 may be a good estimate, maybe it is an overrun. But we may find, we had to spend $50,000. Well, we can come to the rescue on that part. Maybe we'll find variable milfoil someday, you know? But, and so that's why we believe that we should be putting in a reasonable amount of money, keep some in reserve for emergencies and help, you know, with the safety net and the kinds of things I just talked about. That's, that's the consequence. The real consequence though is, if we can't control it because we don't have enough money, we're gonna, we're gonna avoid paying $7,000, but we're gonna be guaranteed of having to pay, lose revenues of at least 10 times that. That's, that's what the people need to be, need to understand.
Can I add something to that? Steve Baker, I'm Mark. I'm the founder of TTPA. Norm and I have traded being president on and off for the last 15 years or so. But I'm also a member of the Conservation Commission in Milton. And I've been spending a fair amount of time talking to Tom Gray, who's chairman of the select board of Milton. And I don't expect that Milton will leave us high and dry on this. They will be giving us money. They're already talking about giving us a percentage, maybe all of it, of what they now charge for landing a boat at the town pond. You have to pay a fee at the gate to get in. And it's going to the coffers in Milton. It's not a lot of money, but it's several thousand dollars. They're already talking about giving all a portion of that fee. And also Jeff's, I'm just blank.
Jeff Everett.
At the Everett's Cove. On the Lebanon side is also talking about doing the same. So, and I, and I want to remind folks that the coffer that we're talking about being built out for roughly $28,000 has come from Milton and Lebanon residents over the last 10, 12 years. So they're already invested in making sure that this stuff goes away. So I don't imagine anybody with any reasonable expectations about what the waterfront means to both towns will walk away from it. The question is, how quickly can we get to extinguishing it? Moving on. We want the water clean just as much as you do, so.
You're at the end, you're coming at the end of the growing season now. What we really need to prepare for is the spring.
Absolutely.
That money needs to be ready to go at ISO. Do I get that, do I understand that correctly?
Well.
I was close to it.
The, for management, we, we came every two weeks to, to assess the plant growth to know when it was time to remove it because there are a couple of native. to know when it was time to remove it because there are a couple of native niad species that are very similar. We, it would be more like early July, something like that, when management would start in earnest probably because we started the removal, we could have started the removal right at the end of July, we started it early August. By that time, end of July, early August, you could really tell the difference between the two species. And we'd probably treat, if we did use herbicides, it would probably be sometime in July.
I've had a comment really, if you don't mind, as outgoing selectmen, I haven't had my hands on this quite a bit too. I think it's very important to note, not just people in this room, but everybody in both towns. Reiterate, this isn't just a revenue issue as far as taxes, I mean, it is that, but it also affects our local economies. You get a lot of, I mean, look at the influx that we have in town. Roughly, we have seven thousand people here in the wintertime and we flux up to what, twelve thousand?
Something like that.
You know, that's a lot of people that come here in the summertime, of course, doing other things too, but waterfront is a, is a draw. I think one thing that hasn't happened yet, and I'm just going to, correct me where I'm wrong, Norm, but I mean TPPA is a private organization. You guys are, you know, I understand where your funds come from, they come from your local association at the lakes. Both sides, I believe, or is it only Milton?
Both sides.
Both sides, that's the right thought. You know, and it's one of those things where it is not a far stretch to say that both towns need to contribute, you know, and I want to go on record kind of saying that. You know, this isn't just a private issue, this is a public issue as well. It's, it's losing my train of thought right now, I'm very tired, I apologize, but you know, it's just one of those things that, again, it's going to come down to vote of the select board as far as whether to let the state move forward. I would strongly urge the select board to allow them to do what they need to do. You know, they, they do have other options past that, but you know, it's time consuming. The other part of it is that hasn't happened, and I don't know that Milton has, the Conservation Commission in Milton may be more active than our Conservation Commission is right now as a member, kind of inactive member of the steering committee, but still was involved with that. I know we had one conservation member, maybe two from Lebanon that was on that steering committee, but I don't think there's any, any real thrust in the town of Lebanon. Mary stepped forward to want to be part of that steering committee, we need to go next step forward. The town really needs to, if we can get enough people interested, appoint a commission, you know, committee, you gotta, you gotta create that committee and then appoint people to it. You know, that takes it off from your table, having to deal with it every week, every week, because there'd be something else going on behind the scenes and letting them drive the, the tone of this thing to the people and the vote that would need to be, because the budgets do need to be implemented and put in place. And really, the minimal on your tax vote. By the time you break it down and your mill rate's very, very minimal.
Do we have a question?
Well, I guess getting back to what we were talking about initially, I just wanted to, I'm happy to answer other questions people have, but I also, I want to be clear in my mind, I understand what the opinion of the town attorney is. I want to be clear whether the select board feels that it still should go to a town vote or not. You would, we, we talked about if that were happening, having a handout in November, it may still be helpful to have a handout in November so people are familiar with the issues, which we can certainly provide. What I said to you previously is our communications person reworked into a fact sheet and I can get that, I knew with however many copies you want, I can get that down to you. But I just want to be, be clear, in my understanding, about what the select board takes from that, the attorney's advice and whether you're still going to be advising to go to a, to a vote for the town or not, and maybe you don't know that right now, and if you don't, that's fine too, obviously, that's your, your call.
I'm, I'm good, well, and we haven't really talked about it, so maybe we should sit and talk about it as a board, but you know, my opinion is I think we should move forward. The only thing I want to see as the vote, of course, the money has to go to the vote. If we put money on the ballot, then it has to go.
I get that, I'm, I'm just talking.
But as far as move forward, I'm comfortable with how the attorney has worded that, that ordinance does not really apply to this situation and that you guys can move forward as far as I'm concerned. I don't know if I should just, you know, if I need to make a, some type of, how do you feel, Paul?
Motion. Go ahead.
Well, John answered my question. I was worried about the danger downstream as well as because obviously.
Well, I think chemicals have changed. I think chemicals really have changed now compared to what they would have been fifteen to twenty years ago. I think they do a lot more research and a lot more checking in that, you know, my concern is, my concern isn't so much how, you know, to move forward, my concern would be to get it out to the people. When the vote comes, to have money set aside for it to continue, that they will all go say, oh, you know, because, just to give up to them correctly so that they would say, okay, this is our town, let's help fix it and not, I don't live up there, so I don't really care, you know, I want people to not feel that way because it's important.
So Royce, is that okay with you? Go ahead.
They have to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead. We also need that committee that Matt talked about.
Correct.
We need somebody to head it up. We need, we need to clear the way as, as the select board for the committee. And it's not that I'm concerned yet, I'm with this all the way.
Thank you.
We need it. And it's not just the money, it's, it's, if we can stop it now, we're much better. And I know there's not going to be just an instant stop, but if we, if we can get it under control and keep it down.
So I guess I, I guess I make a motion to let DEP move forward with the herbicides and not worry about the, no spray ordinance because it doesn't apply. So I make a motion for a second.
Yeah.
And we know that, well, I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Okay. And, and do you, would you still like a handout to have similar to what?
Can you get it here in time for the election?
Yeah, I have it here, I just actually need to, it was converted into a, into a different format and what I would do is if it's, we had put a tagline in there at the top, Lebanon votes to the side, I would take that out and I could get you, I don't know, do you want a hundred copies or what do you want?
I'm talking about presidential election.
So it's a little more than that, but.
Maybe three hundred if you want. Yeah, that's great. Another thing, if you have one of those little plastic stand-ups, so it can stand up and be stood up next to the package, so when people are walking by, I'm just thinking when they walk by, they're looking and they're going to see that little plant. So if you have one stood up on that little, you know how they give those little slide-in stand-up things for paper? If you put one in there and then send the files down, that's where I think it's more likely to see it.
I don't know if we do, but I will make.
Christine, you have some questions?
I, oh, can I just say one other thing about the toxicity? I'm sorry, but did we provide, we, I know we talked about tox, toxicology of the product before, and we prepared something for the town of Warwick and Summersworth for discussions about drinking water. And I could, I can send that to you electronically, I don't know if you have that or not.
I don't, well, I don't think we do because we haven't gotten that far. I don't think.
It's not, it's not in something decently, decent, so I will either have to sue.
Okay, yeah, yeah, great.
John, did that come through the committee? I don't think I saw that. Did that come, the toxicity?
This is a, no, I don't believe so, Ben.
We have it, okay, we have it. It's something, considerations for using herbicides, we provided specifically to check the vote. I just haven't seen it.
No, no, we didn't email it, it's something we put together for, as I, as he says, for Summersworth and Burwick.
I can't remember how we came across it, but we did.
And I think we have some other questions. Dana, do you have a question?
Yes, respectfully. Paul, could you state why you are voting against?
Well, I'm against herbicide, pesticide, anything else. I've been that way since I read Silent Spring nineteen, when?
Seventeen.
Nineteen fifty-nine?
Nineteen seventy.
Seventy. Rachel Carson.
Thank you.
Dana, do you have a question?
No, yeah, I would come make a comment. Hey.
Hey, hi, Norm. One thing, you mentioned the committee, you mentioned a committee, we don't make a committee. I'm not sure if you were talking about making a committee for Lebanon to advise Lebanon, Silicon Board and do things for Lebanon. We have a committee of citizens, private citizens with members from both towns. I would like to, and I came before you a few months ago, I asked you to identify more people from Lebanon to be in that committee. This should be, this, I hope that we don't, we don't move in the direction where we have two programs. That we have the Lebanon program and we have a Maine program. The lakes don't know it, the water doesn't know it, and the weeds don't know it. We only have one program, one coordinated program. Our idea of forming a committee in the first place was to have it be manned by both Lebanon and Milton, have it be responsive to the boards of selectmen of both towns. Ultimately morph that into an organization, perhaps a municipal base, a legally established municipal entity that's connected to both towns and to both states. Every city's authority from the towns and it is important and is empowered by both towns. Whether or not that can ever come about, I don't know, but that's, that was the idea. I would just say when you're talking about committees, try to think in terms of getting, getting people from both towns.
Well, right now, you are the authority. You guys are all closest to it and deal with it from all states.
That'd be a question for the attorney, because I mean, that was a question that was thrown out just before I went out and we never got to that point of asking them because I don't, I don't know the answer, I don't make that work either.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we'd have to review the statutes, we don't even know if, if the states would even permit that kind of an entity.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and maybe, it may be best that it be, continue to be a private, without a connection to the, without a legal connection. I, I don't know, that, that's, my only point is, let's try to keep it a, a one town, a two-town program. Otherwise, otherwise, we're going to be competing with each other.
Also, I think people in town may say, well, we could pull it out, we can't go and stop whipping it out. If you do, it's going to spread fat from what I understand. So people can't get that idea, why can't we just whip it out like waiting a daughter? Yeah. It ain't that type of thing.
Yeah, we, we trained, we did hold some training sessions, we trained some people some more years to properly remove it. And we did have a, a fair amount of it removed by people who are so trained in variable, shallow, variable water. You can't go pick it out and it gets much deeper than your knees, you know. Even, even if you're a snorkeler, it's tough maintaining buoyancy and all that and not, not having it break up.
Imagine the bottom's a little murky too, it's easy to dry things up.
Right.
I may have a suggestion too. On voting day, when you have the flyers there, I don't know, some people from your committee might want to go for a couple hours with the flyer and just explain to them, you know, you walk by all the time and looking for information, you might want a couple people sitting, you know, just for a few hours if they take shifts or something to, you know, just talk about it a little bit, make people, you know, they can grab the flyer, but they can understand that this is.
There's two people from Milton on the committee, from Lebanon on the committee.
Yeah.
And one of them is here.
Yeah.
And the other is Ruth Gannon from the Conservation Commission. So I, I don't know if they would be, if they would be able to do that.
Yeah, but if they wanted to for an hour or two, it might be helpful too.
I'm sorry, Christine, no, yeah, when we go to vote, there's the tables that are set up against the wall there and we have any number of people raising funds or whatever, I would imagine you guys could make some room for these folks to.
They just have to tell Dale to spot for them, that's also the time to do that, if they wanted to, just flip the thought, that's all, just kind of put it out there.
Can they accept donations?
Yes.
Yes. If you could have some of the funds for the TPPA.
Well, we have to, we have an application for membership.
Right, that would be good.
But people don't need to be members to be volunteers, they don't need to be members to make contributions.
So maybe have a sign-up list and get some people who are interested and sign the names. They don't vote. Most of the people that have the niad vote could be not year-round residents.
Well, it won't be right because a lot of, a lot of our members of TPPA now, while they are property owners on the waterfront, they're not necessarily residents, voting residents of either Milton or other.
So they need us.
So the, the votes, when it comes to appropriating funds, needs to come from registered voters in the towns, most of whom won't even be property owners.
And as budget committee members, absolutely, because that's the more voices discussing the revenues and the effects that they will lose in the both towns, but you know, focus on ours.
Yeah.
Sue, would you be, or select board, would you be willing to forward the attorney's, town attorney's opinion, so I have that? And I wanted to add one other thing, Royce returning to what the state did this year and in addition to hiring the contractor, we spent three days removing with our own divers at areas of less dense infestation. They were working in the north end, so we hit some of the other spots that we thought we could get at, and Jeff Everett kindly allowed access at his place and also disposal. We disposed of the plants high and dry at his place. And of course, Mighty Joe.
I just hadn't heard anything, but.
Yeah, we, we came in September and you weren't here and reported on what had happened this summer. But of course, Mighty Joe Bank Ground was a big help on the Milton side for the contractor. Really did help.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
I'll send that to you.
I'd suggest that we don't put stuff, I know the deal's planning right now, setting up where like things are at, because we had a conversation about, just tell them on the way out.
I'll probably tell them.
Yeah, because I know his plan is like an out.
Anyone who's interested in applying to become a member of TPPA, I would ask, I would suggest that you go to the threeponds.org, www.threeponds.org, that's a website, TPPA, you can read about us, read about our mission, take a look at some publications that we put out, put there, you can get, you can download an application form.
This will be the last thing I have to say. We are glad to come down and talk and, and update the select, the select board on what's happening, but we also know you have many, many other things to deal with. So if you know right now that it would be good to come back in the spring, or if you want to wait for next summer, or I, we contact you at some point after we have, you know, the plan down for next year, something, anything like that, should I just be in touch with?
What time do you think you'd have the plan down?
Well, I'm going to have to know what's going on by, right after I sell probably at the latest.
We should definitely set a meeting for then.
So I can get.
It's going to be close to a town meeting too.
I know the email went out and I quickly reviewed it, but Norm's numbers, the projected numbers as far as putting a budget together. Now, next year, is the state's taking care of it next year, next summer, or are we doing it all?
Well, with grants, with grants, we have grant.
How close are those numbers, I mean, the committee seems conservative. And so what in your opinion, you had said the side of the town of Lebanon was seven thousand, I think that's roughly when I just walked in, seven thousand.
Right, if, if, if they're going to take twenty-four percent of the cost.
So, which seems low to me, to be honest with you.
Well, that's just proportional to the, to the two thousand fifteen taxes.
Okay.
Milton, Milton got two hundred, two hundred thousand roughly, two, two million in taxes from waterfront properties in two thousand fifteen. Lebanon got slightly under six hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's way up for two thousand sixteen.
My point is, I, I guess, I mean, I know Betty's up after I am today, so you're in the budgeting process, this is something that needs to be budgeted for now.
I think it is.
And, and my suggestion would be a revolving account, I don't know if CIP is the correct terminology, but it should be something that, you know, ten thousand goes into.
And it keeps going into, yeah.
So it's a, it's a non-aspiring fund. It'd be rolled over into the fund. That would be the ideal way, that's what they do in Multinville, for the lakes there. Thanks, Angel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chargin, again.
Thank you, Deborah.
It is, thank you. It is, thank you.
Sue just said something really quick before we start with Ben. I, I got a meeting set up with Jim Foster and Ron Collins for 14th of November to discuss the new bridge, bridge.
Oh, really?
So they'll be coming in that day.
They're going to get chairs.
I didn't ask him that. I'm getting the phone number.
I'll tell you one here.
Isn't, is Ron up for reelection issue? What if he doesn't get reelected?
But I think we're, I still think we're outnumbered by a bigger project. Poison, the Serra One Bridge.
Yeah.
But you had to compete against that.
Yeah, but there's all kinds of smaller projects being done, Marissa, not just one project in the whole state.
Big one. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a speech first, is that where we got started?
You want to move?
What's new, right?
Because I can't see.
What's your name, sir? What's your plan?
All right. To start off, I guess I would say, right now, we, glad we're here, because we have, we have had a meeting of the minds. I think we're building something new, I think we all know that, it's never happened in this town, so it's very loose right now. When we first met, Royce wasn't even at that meeting, so it was only the three of us. Right now, as a, as a resident, I got great concerns as far as the funds, the money side of things. I've seen a lot that's going on, that I have a lot of questions about money-wise. I'm not seeing the everyday, so that's up to you guys. If you're going to move forward, I guess, with an assessing agent, I want to, I don't know where, where we are right now. I'm in limbo, I really am. So I, I mean, if you guys, your plan is to move forward, then I guess I would like to just go on record as saying, I'm concerned whether the funds are there. But if you guys feel that they are and you're going to move forward with somebody, I'm interested, you know, in moving forward. As far as the waterfront, I guess in my opinion and in my understanding at the time, I did the job that I was hired to do. I, as a resident, more than happy to help you guys out and answer questions, whether it's waterfront or anything else that pops up that I might have information on. But I'm having some issues. I'm having some issues as far as whether I'm allowed behind the counter to go photograph. I'm having issues as being told what I am, what I'm not supposed to be doing, when I'm supposed to respond, you know, how, you know, jump down type of thing. People are talking outside of this office, coming out of this office, that, you know, geez, Ben didn't call me back today. What the heck? Well, that's not the contract we have set up. I know who it is, I'm not putting a name to it.
I don't know.
So, and I don't appreciate it. I've been spoken to very disrespectfully in the last two weeks in here. And that, nope, not by the board. And I'm not happy with how that went. I don't need to put myself out there in that position. I don't think that's what you guys want either. So I guess we gotta get a lot of questions, we get a lot of things that should be reviewed, and I prefer they're put down in writing this next time, you know, wherever we're going. I don't know what you guys want, I mean, it is not my responsibility to meet with 50 angry taxpayers, I'm not the assessor. You know? I will gladly answer questions for you, you guys, so you can do that. You know, that's how this should work.
So I think in the, I think in the, oh, sorry, Paul, go ahead.
That was part of it, that's why I voted to hire you.
Nope.
Right here.
Show me in writing. You can't, because I wasn't part of it.
And I think, you know, I think I thought the same thing. I thought you were going to come in a half a day.
You hadn't mentioned that.
I had mentioned it, maybe we never made that thing, and that's what I was...
If it was just for that, I would have voted against hiring you.
No, that's fine.
Nothing against you.
No, that's fine.
I thought that was part of the package.
Right, but you can't relieve your responsibilities that have been put on you by the voters of this town. Much as you'd like to shirk those responsibilities, you cannot, you're still the assessors.
I understand, but we can hire somebody to do the job, that's what we did.
That's not what you did. You hired someone to finish the waterfront.
Yes, we did.
Which you stopped.
Correct, which I finished.
Then you had so many hours in it, that, I mean, it's...
Right, but you're, you're, you're going down two different roads and thinking you're converging in the middle and you're not. It's two different things. So that's what we're trying to establish right now, where are we at? Because again, I have no problem coming in here and answering questions.
And I don't think you'll hear, Royce, but I think Paul and I were on the feeling that you were going to come in for a half a day after, maybe we didn't have it in writing, and maybe that's the question I need to ask you, would you be willing to come in for a half a day?
It's in your minutes.
Well, and if you show me, because I've looked everywhere, you go get it.
I don't know.
I'll excuse you, you go get it. You don't have it.
I, I have no idea.
No, he doesn't have it, I, I, I know that.
But I think, let, let's, I mean, I think...
Eight twenty second.
But the way I've been spoken to in this office the last two weeks, I'm, I'm trying to maintain a level of calm.
Eight twenty second, when we hired him. Ten a minute, that we hired him.
I think what I would like to see, you know, to get through this process until our next vote, because I mean, I really, the board hasn't really discussed it yet, but you know that my feeling is I want to put an assessor's rate of pay and job on that ballot, because this town so desperately wants to have a true assessor. You know, the selectmen are the selectmen, and yes, you've been to school for two years, and we had him finish that project for us, but in all fairness, that is a full-time, or at least a good part-time job. I mean, we haven't really crossed that bridge yet either, but, so I guess, my question would be, and maybe we didn't discuss it, and maybe we didn't have it in writing, or in, and that was all by fault, it's my fault, you know, but we have lots of people waiting for answers. Now, I don't know if you'd be willing to come in a half a day?
I have expressed to Sue, because alls I keep hearing involves a lot of questions, a lot of questions, but I'd never heard a question yet, except for a couple emails that really didn't have anything to do with my qualifications that anybody sitting at this table right now couldn't go do. You know, go walk underneath the building and see if it has a frame, you know, whether it's mobile home or not. That's not a $36 an hour go do. And I just have so many eyes on the fire, that, that's fine, but what I've asked for is combine these questions, you know, so then I can come in, whatever we're going to do, you know, whatever we pound out, that half a day or whatever, if it's a full day every other or something like that, and answer those questions, you know what I mean? I don't have every property memorized, so I can't sit here and, geez, Dana's going to hit me and, you know, everybody else is going to hit me here with a question without being able to research them. And I don't think that's fair to not be able to research.
I think people want to come in and actually talk to...
One-on-one.
One-on-one to...
We haven't established that, I don't have a problem with that, but we need to establish where we're going. I, I don't...
The questions that I have gotten are all the same, and they are, how did you come to the assessment?
Which I have copies of, which you guys had signed.
And I've sent quite a few to people on email, and I've got a list of people that have asked questions.
It's out right there, so I wrote that and answers those questions.
And I've, and I've sent it to most everybody that's emailed me. So, I, other than that, I didn't have any specific questions they were asking about the assessment.
Yeah, and I have this too. And I guess maybe if, if, you know, if, I mean, I guess if we could do this together and Royce is more knowledgeable about this than I am, so maybe even if he was involved with, I mean, I don't know if you really want to do it, I know busy you are.
I, I don't mind, I'm interested. I'm greatly concerned with what's being spent. And I, I really am, having come away from the budgets and knowing where they were, I don't have access like you guys have, you know, I would at least once a month, maybe twice a month, you know, find out what line item is overspent by what amount, you know, and why. I don't think anybody's doing that, and I'm concerned. So, let's not kid each other, you know, once a public official, always in the public's eye.
Absolutely.
You know, so everything I do or don't do, somebody's going to condemn, they're going to do the same to you, they're doing the same to you, they're doing the same to you, you know, so you're not going to make everybody happy, and that's fine, they got to fix it together. But I just want to go on record that saying that, I'm concerned about the money. If you guys feel the money's there, I'm interested. And, and, and that's not about answering the questions about waterfront computations. I got no problem doing that, but it's moving forward. I guess my other concern is some of the things that I've seen happen on, on video in the last couple weeks, which I have watched, there's been abatements granted that shouldn't have been granted. So if my name's going to be attached to this, my reputation's attached to this, I guess I would be asking for all or nothing, not just the waterfront.
Being a waterfront owner, it was a, we felt a slap in the face that we were targeted and if we wanted, we, whether we, whole town, it wouldn't be any part of it. But when you target a small segment and more people are not voters, that don't live in town, so you were saving a lot of money from non-residents, and the feeling was, okay, we can target it, why don't they do whole town and make it come out better for everybody?
Well, I think, my personal opinion on that, I think the waterfront hasn't been assessed for such a long time that, in all fairness, I don't want to say it in a bad way.
We done the trailers.
Yeah, the trailer, the mobile homes got done.
Year ago.
Year ago. But I think in all fairness, it was time to crack, and I, and I, hopefully moving forward, we will be able to get all of this done, but we can't do it all at once. I mean, this was...
Well, I know it's been on ballot many times to get whole town done.
Right.
And how many times it's been voted down?
Well, that's to hire an assessor, that's...
Well, that's something that needs to be done, you know, and I guess that's part of where I would want to go too, because you're budgeting, you're going to be getting into that season right now.
Yes.
If it's not today, I want, I would like to be involved with a discussion of putting on the ballot a residential, not just commercial, but residential and commercial revow for the town in the next year, because it needs to be done. Milton, to answer your question, by state law, assessors are allowed to do a partial revow, which those five categories I've explained several different times, you're allowed to do that when you see that there's an issue, when you see that there's a problem. The two problems we saw, at least when I was in, I can say, I was, was your mobile homes were way over assessed, okay? I had mobile homes, double wides, that were 22 years old, that were being assessed at $90,000. You know, that's not right. And then your, your waterfronts were showing that they were coming in, the recent sales and stuff like that, certified ratio of just the waterfront were in the 70% range. So if I have a town, a full town, all five categories certified to the state at 97%, and my waterfront's at 70, my mobile homes are up there pretty high, you know, rather around 125, 130 correctly, I don't remember off the top of my head. So they needed to be adjusted and brought back into, so it does bring people paying their fair, fair share of taxes. But I, I guess that's kind of where, where I'm at. I mean, there's a lot of things I would like to discuss, I'm more than willing to talk about them, and I just don't know where you guys are at, it's where I'm kind of in limbo and kind of getting tossed around a little bit.
Excuse me, what would the cost be of a whole reassessment?
I have, speaking with other professionals that are interested, 100,000 wouldn't surprise me for those two categories. And they're talking possibly under, but I mean, the guy threw a number, I think it's not fair to...
Yeah, so that's kind of an average of what you would think.
I, you know, I think the right way to do, because I've seen other towns that have taken $10,000, $10,000 revolving account, kept going, and they build it up, because every 10 years, oh, we get $100,000, you know, and, and it works. We need to start that. And this first time's going to hurt, it needs to get done now, to fix things. So, so you could appropriate $100,000, raise and appropriate $100,000, and then put it off the bid, and maybe it comes out less, you know, and, cool, that money then goes into, you have to vote on it, put it in a revolving account or something, or however you wrote it, but that'd be the wisest thing to do. If there's 20,000 left over, it goes in for the next...
My turn. So, actually, this brings up a question that came up today. I was out selling tickets for our fundraiser for the fire department, and I happened into Kenny Automotive, and I have her permission to say that this question is from her. So another business owner, who, who I didn't speak with, so I won't say her name, happened in and saw Krista, and was relating to Krista that 202 businesses only are going to be reevaluated this year. And Krista was concerned about continuing to donate to Little League and Girl Scouts and all that, because this other business owner is going business to business to business, saying that 202 businesses are being targeted. Now, I related to Krista that I hadn't heard anything of the sort, and that I thought that if you did a commercial business reevaluation, it would have to be all businesses in the town, not only 202. And I just want to make sure that I related that to her correctly, because she was quite concerned, you know, that...
We haven't even...
There'll be a discussion, one needs to be had.
It does, but we haven't even got to that spot yet.
But could it be only a Route 202, or would it have to be an across-the-board blanket?
By opinion, it should be every business in town.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I, I do know, she was the second person, and the first person, I didn't ask permission to speak their name, but there were two business owners today that I stopped in to see if they were interested in tickets, that told me, oh, no, because they're targeting Route 202 this year. And I said, I sit in every meeting and I have not heard that. So I just wanted to make that clear, and I told them both I would ask that question on video tonight.
We have not gotten to that point yet, so we're still trying to muddle through and trying to get an assessor and somebody to help us get through this, I mean, that's...
And the person that said it, I, I haven't seen them in a selectmen's meeting, maybe one since I started coming two years ago, so I, I was quite taken aback at who it was that was spreading that, but I assured them both I had heard nothing of the sort, and that I would ask that question on video tonight when Ben was here, so...
Another thing would be that, put it this way, I guess, is that abatements can be processed appropriately. When they're not, taxpayers' rights are being stripped from them. It is sometimes happening, because the time clock's not started for them on appeals when it should be. You know, when we're, try and help somebody out, I know what the intent is, trying to help somebody out, and you're eating up a week, or you're eating up five days, or whatever, it's taking that away from their appeals process and their rights. So I mean, that's the other part of it, I guess. If I was in here, I mean, I know Sue's doing a lot of the data input, things like that, that's all stuff I think that needs to be discussed and we need to pound out details, whether you want to continue doing that, and is that something now I'm going to pick up if I come in here? And, and I don't know that it can be done in half a day, it depends, you know, you'd be able to probably, I mean, you got the inflow of there's times when it's busy, there's times when it's not, you know, so...
It hasn't not been busy for a month.
You know what I'm saying? Don't go that half a day with more, you know, that's, I'd like to put our heads together, you know, and if we're going to go forward, the more we can put down on paper, the better. It eliminates questions that we don't see eye to eye on or didn't understand, you know, just, we didn't have a meeting in mind, type of thing. So, and then I guess part of that would be, like I said, I, I, if you have a CMA at your disposal, why are we only doing it for waterfront only? Like I say, I've seen abatements that shouldn't have been granted, and if we move forward in that, I guess, because I don't want to see, it's still going to be you guys make the decision, but at least you're going to have professional behind it.
Direction.
Push it in the right, yeah, the right direction. And, and access to the website, I'd like to have access to the assessor's page, if that was where we were going. That paper right there can be posted on the web, the website, and answer a lot of questions for a lot of people. And...
I can do that?
Yeah.
I'd like to see minutes posted before that, just to be honest here.
August 22nd.
Yeah, August 22nd.
I don't think they'll talk about minutes.
I know, but I'm just saying, somebody come in and put something there, and it gets posted tomorrow when we've been waiting...
We've got a contractor, we're chief's as well, we don't have any. I've been after them for a month and a half, I mean, I'm being told to just write it down, which I could, but it'd be nice to have the right documents to be able to submit my hours on.
What, what do you mean, time slips?
Well, that independent contractor should be going...
Oh, 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 oh. They don't have any though?
Oh, it's at the last blocks and for a month and a half, we haven't had any. They haven't brought back, there's none in the office. I have hours to put in, just like, you know.
I just had a question, when was the last time a full reassessment was done?
Never.
I remember.
A full revow? The town's never done a full revow. I'll have several people in this town that have told me, oh, it happened back in 1960. Guess what, it wasn't required until 1979, 1980, so I doubt it.
I remember something about it.
I can't imagine things being done that weren't required.
Numbers change, but as far as going like.
You have right now issues with barns not being assessed. Some are, because with the funky categories that we have, that the Mary Poppins world that we have to live in for assessing right now, doesn't make a lot of sense. You know, no, you have big ranch, you have a little ranch, big gate, little gate, with values attached to them, that's how you assess. Not based off recent solds, not based off square footage values. There's a lot to it that needs to be done and corrected.
So there's a formula like this for all different types?
How I explain I came to building values there is how the whole town should be done, and it should be according to grading scales. You know, each house you go look at, we shouldn't be just on the outside either.
And grading values are set by the state.
You know, to get a proper assessment, if I'm allowed inside, there's a big difference at this hardwood floor, which of course you don't want me necessarily seeing versus linoleum, there's a lot of grading issues like that. But that allows for a proper assessment, which you can't do that from outside only. But on the other side of that, the homeowner has the right to refuse. And I make sure when I knock on door, I tell them that, you have the right to refuse. When I went through Hyrum, I made sure they knew that right up front.
Did you also tell them when that happens, like, oh, my daughter had her house in Rochester, if you do not let them in, they're going to tax you at the highest rate ever, is that what they told you?
I wouldn't say that.
I mean, she let them in, but I mean.
Right, yeah, I would say that, just infuriating people at that point, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Tongue in cheek, I mean, if you're sitting here and you've got vinyl fencing instead of a wooden fence, and whatever, manicured lawn, and stone walkway, you know the inside's probably pretty nice, you know what I mean, so you might make certain guesses and grade a little higher, and that's honestly, that may have happened on the waterfront. I'll go right out and say that right now, the correct way to, correct way.
You're going to have to grade on the outside too.
Throw the abatement in, if you believe it's wrong, and then I'm going to request I go inside.
I don't know the problem.
I don't know about the reason.
May I add your question?
Yay, yay, good, because I was.
I own two homes on Soul Show's road, so I was just wondering what I need so that I can get the abatement on the other house? Does my license have to have that address? Does my registration, does my car? Yeah, one-on-one house, and I could get, I'll live in the other one. What do I need for proof for residency? That's my question.
It would come down to my opinion, I mean, you both work the other side of that, so.
You live in one house.
No, what I'm asking is what do I need for proof of my residency?
Registration of your car.
Registration of your vehicle?
A registration of my vehicle.
And your driver's license.
My license, and I would think my mail would be going there too? So my registration, my license, and my mailbox, easy enough.
There's a homestead application too, that you need to allow.
Right, right. My license first and my registration.
Oh, okay, yeah, because it asks those questions on it, so.
Which brings me to another thing that just happened recently.
Your 911, when you fill out your information for that.
I never filled out information for 911.
Which brings me to another situation that we need to address.
That's my question.
Right, so it brings me to another situation that the town needs to address. Okay, recently, the case of Donald Petrin versus the town of Scarborough, just went to the United, through the main state Supreme Court. And out of that came several different decisions. I know I gave a copy to you, I don't know if the board wants a copy or not, but it's interesting. We have combined lots in this town, and we have several waterfront properties that are combined right now that we just did. Okay, the Supreme Court justices of the state of Maine have come out and said that is illegal unless they meet a five acre minimum. However, the other side of this is a bigger problem we have in town, non-grandfathered lots. Technically, all your lots that aren't two acres right now are illegal lots. Okay, that's not going to jive, not going to kick everybody out of their properties that aren't two acres, but we have a legal conundrum here. So again, going back to the justices saying, you can't combine those lots because it's screwing all the other taxpayers over, because you have a lot here that's worth X number of dollars, they should be being assessed for the same amount, just like anybody else, if they have the 100 foot or whatever. You can't combine them unless they legally did combine them, then you couldn't give them, yeah, unless they're five acres. But my question is, if they're not legal lots, they're not technically, I mean, if you have an empty lot, Mary has an empty lot.
Oh, I do.
It's non-buildable.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, it's one of those things, we, I've got some questions for the town attorney, so.
Because the other thing too is the ones with the garage on one and that we combined.
And it came down to when they were sold, you know, they were sold as two different lots, and that was how subdivision was. And so the one for the garages, to me, I don't feel that they had the value to them.
Right.
Right.
And I think some of them.
Justice is saying otherwise, so we need some clarification.
So, yeah, some of it, well, what are you going to do, change the?
And they just have another case.
I'm sure Lebanon isn't the only town in Maine with a two acre minimum.
No, but this brand new assessor in Scarborough, I say brand new, that's 2012. We're through the wringer, because he's just continuing on with what had been being done.
Is that something that just happened?
Just posted, this one was August 16th, and there was not one posted in the last.
I just want to write the question up, and Sue can send it over to them, yeah, so that way we get some clarification on that, yeah.
Absolutely.
Because now you, it's too late to change it this year, but now for next year, you may have to uncombine them, right? Hmm, interesting.
What is it, what, WC isolation?
The minute you feel like you're progressing forward, you pull the rug out from under you.
This is the same tape that says it's okay to do that.
But there's a requirement I never realized, yes, you're right, because we're not being taught in assessment school, there's a five acre minimum on those lots, and we're not taught that.
And it doesn't say that on that paper either, I mean, that's a paper that, I didn't make that up, that came from, I don't know if it was MMA or what.
Supreme Court justices pulled it out, and everybody in the community went, CMA's, you know. We're not the only ones.
So now I understand the abatement process, if you feel that you've been taxed inappropriately. So actually, this comment that I want to make comes from a discussion I had with Mary earlier. What if you, I mean, not that I ever come in and look at what everybody else's taxes, but other people do. What if you come in and you're wondering, like, how come my taxes are X, and somebody with a larger lot, and a larger home, two houses down, like the same basic type of construction, only a larger entity, and their taxes are lower than yours? How do you go, I mean, do you come into the select board and, and speak to them against, like your neighbor's taxes being lower than yours? I mean, I don't understand if you think that it's been erroneous.
So, so having sat in this office for three years, and knowing how the town works very well, you haven't had someone sit in here consecutively, you know, continuously, the same paperwork being handed down, handed down.
Right.
So for us, very difficult. I know what Christine's going through, I know what Royce and Paul have gone through. You step in here, you're like, holy smokes, you think you can, you got it by the tail, but you know what, you don't.
Right.
It's got you, you know, and it's bigger than you thought it was, sure, you know, there's more going on than you think. And it's one of those things where it's always good to come in and have the conversation.
So you just would come in and question, like, hey, I looked, I mean, I would feel kind of creepy myself personally, saying I was looking at somebody else's tax bill, but that's, you know. Well, I'm sure you've had people do it, I know that people have, but I just don't under, I just could personally, like, never go and pull my next door neighbor's tax bill, like, to geek what they were being charged, but.
But then, but it's a way to find out if there's mistakes been made too.
Right, so if you feel that, like, somebody else who has a bigger and larger property than yours has been taxed less than you have, you should definitely come in and bring it to the board to tend to.
A simple mistake we made.
You can come in and see me, you know, I mean, most people stop in and ask.
Petrin versus Scarborough, that's exactly what it was, because.
That's how they found out about it?
Probably, you know, somebody, somebody has two, and I'm not saying you do, I'm just saying use your example. But he's got two lots, okay, and they were done as a, as a combined lot with a special valuation on the second lot.
Right.
It opened the door for all those people in Probstneck, in that whole community. So, so in other words, they might have been three taking advantage of this.
Right.
And the other, I don't have the real numbers, but the other 40 or 50 were paying their real taxes as they should have been. All 40 and 50 filed abatements.
Okay, so that's going to bring me to ask about the abatement that was just done just last week, when it was multiple homes on a single, and I know it was because they talked about it in here, but it was multiple homes on one lot. So that was, that abatement was granted for three years, but it's not, it's not sounding appropriate at this time, right, if you can't combine?
Well, it was, it was, no, we're talking about lot, it was always one lot, it had two homes on it, and we charged it for two lots. So in turn.
It's several that were done that way, so that was.
So in turn, now it's charged back as one lot, like it should be. It's truly just one lot with two homes, the homes are all assessed, and it's just a one lot.
That's one that I wouldn't have abated, I don't believe it should have been abated, but, you know, that's not my decision, that's the board's decision.
There is one pied that's paying the taxes on the land.
I've actually done a right question on it.
Oh, then I'll shut up.
That's how it went.
I haven't seen exactly what it was, I just watched the video and just know something happened, I don't know for who or what, but. You had a lot of others, and that's the situations where you, you, you either give it to all of them, call them all up, say, we're going to do that for you. You know, so everybody, and is that being responsible with the taxpayers' dollars? Probably not, you know, because they were all treated the same way. You can go one way or the other, I mean, it's your decision.
But if they were all treated that one way before, now if one is getting abatement, all the others that were treated that way all deserve abatements too, right, is that kind of?
Absolutely, if we can find them all, absolutely, if they don't know.
They have the right to apply for an abatement.
Yes.
They're looking for the people down.
Yep.
Yeah, so it would not then be up to the town to say, hey, we've been charging you incorrectly, we just identified this in one person, and now we've identified it in several, so you need to come in and apply for it. It's just kind of like mum's the word and hope they don't find out, is that?
Well, that's not how I feel about that.
No, so in my opinion, in that situation, that was something that was corrected, conversations that I've had with Sue, with the board, that was something that's been done for years that way, it wasn't an error of valuation per se.
Right, because everybody got the same.
Against somebody, everybody was treated the same way, it's just now a different way of looking at it and doing it, obviously correcting, I don't know.
Yeah, but they got an abatement for three years.
You do have one waterfront, you have eight people that would be completely assessed a totally different way, that need to have letters sent to them, because that was the assessor's collectively, over years, error, you know, and there, that's huge money, because they were.
So those people need to have letters sent to them now, and identify that there was a mistake. So how long does the town have now, since the assessment is completed and tax bills are out? How long before that letter gets sent? And how long before that mistake is identified to those eight people? Or, or, I mean, how, or do we just ignore it and hope it goes away?
I wouldn't ignore it, I just.
My question is, are we talking about the same thing?
We are talking about the same thing.
As you said, combining, and we started out talking about having two separate lots, combining those lots, and we didn't say anything about buildings, actually. And that, and this other one that we're talking about that was abated a while back, was a single lot already, and it never changed.
Right, but you had a double assessment, 35,000, 35,000.
And that was corrected.
Yes.
So that's where I see a difference.
But they all were corrected, right, but now we've gone to like, the eight waterfront, the eight waterfront need a letter or something.
Right, that's a different, those are, they've been mistakenly assessed for years.
I mean, that there was an issue on waterfront, that's why this whole waterfront came to the surface for one reason, then we started looking at real numbers, and the more I got educated and certified, then you knew how, you were digging into the sales ratios and things like that, but the whole issue started bubbling the first month I was in, over three years ago, because people were complaining that, how come my neighbors getting $42,000 for their lot, and I'm getting hit for $400 a foot?
Well, what you're saying is there are eight people right now in that waterfront that are overpaying, and that they need to get letters, and they need to know that they're.
They're corrected now, we didn't know who they were, so we couldn't correct them before, but once I went through, swept through, I know exactly who they are, and I believe they deserve letters, yes.
So when can we expect them to get letters? That's my next question.
Well, really, this is the first I've heard of the eight people on the water, so I'm sure that will.
As soon as we can, then we'll have a discussion.
Yes, that sounds good.
I don't believe that the waterfront is the only problem in towns with taxes.
Oh, it's not, I don't believe.
You have a lot more problems.
Right, I think that that would be a good reason to hire a permanent, single tax assessor, because then you have one person that's accountable, instead of people getting booted every couple of years through election, and nobody's accountable.
I don't assume that's for a lot of questions.
Another person.
I don't have a problem with adding a person to that.
Person's pay to a payroll.
Yeah.
If it becomes full-time, you've got insurances and all kinds of costs.
Well, we got 18 part-time people going in the union, going to get benefits too, so what's one more?
Excuse me, I'm speaking.
Let's go.
In order to do that, now of course my train is throughout. Thanks.
No comment.
In order to do that, we need to bring it up as a vote in front of the people.
Yes, that kind of has.
What, in order to hire a part, a permanent assessor?
In order to hire anybody, like, create a new job.
Well, then how did you create new jobs at the transfer station? Yeah, I know, I'm just trying to understand how that.
I would ask, I guess, important.
I'm just trying to ask how that is different, that's, I just don't understand.
We have to go to the board, because we've got to go back to Ben and revert, so we can get, we can move forward, because we're way behind from Betty, because she was here, supposed to be here at 4:30, so.
I guess my only thing, if Sue can get the questions together, or does that paper answer, maybe sound like it does?
Well, oh.
And I, and I would like to, you know, get your guys' thoughts on paper, what are we looking at? And every other, I think in every other full day from my schedule right now, would be, especially for the first year or so, would be better than that every Friday, half a day, and Fridays would be preferable for me, I guess.
I'm, I'm okay with, I'll make a motion just a second after we discuss it, but I'm okay with every other.
Let's not make any, you know.
Or you want us to discuss it?
Let's count up on us.
Okay.
I want to see where your thoughts are, and then if I, you know, it's be like any other contract negotiation, I guess, and if you would like, I mean, write them down, from ME, I'm doing all the talking, so I don't know really where you guys are at. Throw your ideas down, and then maybe I'll counter it, maybe I will, maybe I'll agree to it, I don't know. But I mean, I'm more than happy to help out, answer questions for the waterfront, I think that's where we had some confusion. I don't think it's fair, or my, my responsibility to sit here and answer the 50 angry people, I've done that, I've paid my time. But I'm more than happy to give you exactly, detail for detail, any questions you guys have, we'll walk right through.
Well, I, I can specifically call these people, I know, like, the first person on the list, he's very up in arms, doesn't understand why his assessment went up so much. And again, they're all, the questions are all pretty much, why did my assessment go up? I think your letter does answer it, it's not going to answer it to this first person.
No, and if we get, you know, get a stump established, so we all know we're heading in the same direction, and I'm in here, I don't mind meeting with somebody at that point, one-on-one, right now, I've been in limbo, so I'm like, okay, you know, but I don't mind doing that, I think that's part of what the job would be at that point in time. Again, having a full meeting to answer, that's beyond because.
And that wasn't what I had in mind when we were talking about it, for like, you to sit there and have to address a room full of people. My idea was.
More than that one time from other sources, that's why it's like, wow.
You know, because of the fact that they didn't understand how the property was assessed, because I know a lot of the people that you actually met with, and I even had somebody come in, if you can believe it, and said, we didn't have a problem with it at all. And, but it, it was more of the, just how did it come to that? You know, how did you get to that point? So, and I've, I've sent an email to some of these people with that letter attached, so I can follow up with them, and I can also call the other ones, and like I said, most of the question, it was just calling to find out what, where did that number come from, how did it come to that?
And I'm all for helping people out, I mean, I sit here, I've tried to, done that, you know, but the other side of this, these.
you know, uh, but the other side of this, this, these are legal issues, and it's gonna sound bad, but it's the way it is, that when we go, if we get to that point, we go to court, the law states, the assessor's right one hundred percent, you don't walk into court fifty-fifty, you walk into court, the assessor's right, it's your job to prove them wrong.
Right.
So, uh, you know, I'm glad to go through and give you the, the way it was done, but the truth of the matter is, some of the questions, some people aren't satisfied, I'm not gonna make you a CMA, you know, by the time, it's just not.
And you're not going to?
And some people are not, they're fine.
And they're not gonna want the answer, because it's not the answer they want, so that's basically what it's, you know, I mean...
You're gonna get complaints, because that's just the nature of the game, you know what I mean?
And I've told people they have an option to do an abatement, you know, I don't tell them they can't.
We have two yet, we saved, we knew with you, and we had a moment.
I'm gonna save your pennies anyway, so if you want, later, it's fine. I don't know how long our executive is to make, but...
And I want other people to set a lot of land, saying, my son, well, went up, I want to watch, what are you basing it on? And I would believe it.
And I generally can tell you too, Mel, that the majority of the land, uh, the buildings, rather, excuse me, the buildings, the majority of them, I don't have an exact figure, went down, you know, the majority of the buildings were over assessed on the waterfront, and land values went up.
Why?
Based off sales.
Thanks.
I mean, they, your assessments on the water, forty-two thousand dollars, I mean, just without getting into full details, uh, simple conversation I had with somebody from the state, okay, so if you have the option of building on a thirty-five thousand dollar piece of land, or a forty-two thousand dollar piece of land on the, on the waterfront, which one are you gonna choose?
Which one?
Everybody's gonna choose the waterfront, it's gonna be valued at forty-two, if not, you know, the way you do that is, if I can do it this real quick, I know we're behind, but a ranch is a ranch, is a ranch is a ranch, a cave is a cave, is a cave is a cave.
Right.
Okay, I don't care if the value of that building, you know, in the grade, let's stick with an average grade, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of factors here. If I have a ranch's average sitting over here on two-acre lot, and I have a ranch's average sitting over there on the waterfront, building for building, realistically, they're both the same.
Same building.
Okay, the land value's the land value, so my sold here, and my sold over there, it's gonna show me the value, the difference in the value of that.
Oh, yeah, yes, I see.
So if my sold over here is a hundred and eighty, and that one's selling for three-twenty...
Yes, that tells you, doesn't it?
You start seeing that pattern, obviously, on your land values, it's going towards your land values.
If, one more thing, when you, I mean, you, you've actually gained a lot of money by doing these assessments, we've made money by reassessing, correct?
The assessments increased.
Yes, so therefore, the income for the town has been greater. I would think that that's a good way to sell that job to, to the public, is to say, you're making your own money, so to speak, because by doing the reassessments, we're, we're bringing more money in, taxes in, so are you paying for yourself, basically? It's a question that I would ask before, in, in budget sections type of situations, are you gonna make money back? And then, I mean, there's other, other factors too, which are, are people pleased, is it correct, are we gonna not end up in trouble, but you are, I mean, if you reassess properly something that wasn't reassessed, you're making money in so many ways.
I would disagree.
No?
No, okay.
I would disagree, because you, it's gonna affect your mill rate, because in the end, uh, I can't give you the exact, it's gonna make a lot of sense, but A plus B is still gonna equal, you know, C, you know, one plus two is still gonna equal three, I, no matter what your assessments are, where, okay, ready now? Where your assessments are, this is what you're looking at, your budget, in the town.
Right.
So, and it goes back to this board, what they approve, I don't set the, the mill rate, I don't set the, the budget, uh, that goes back to the voters of the town, realistically, what they approve, so where, if you're spending down here, or you're spending up here, you're still playing the same game, so wherever the assessments are, if the assessments are up towards the hundred percent where it belongs, it drives that mill rate down, because this times this still has to equal this, no matter where you're at. So it's not a matter of making money for the town, but it, it, it makes the assessments fair, I could argue in a different way, keep you out of court more.
Well, back then, there's a value to that too.
Can I ask a quick question? I can say to you sometime, this letter that you're sending out is explaining to the people why it went from forty-two thousand to a hundred thousand.
We haven't even discussed, the one, the one, the one sent out?
Oh, this, this one.
Yeah, did your letter explain that?
That is my letter to the board of select.
This is Ben's letter, the board. Do you have a letter that explains why forty-two to a hundred thousand? Because it would save me some, from spending my whole day on the phone, from eighty-seven people calling me, asking me why.
Would you like a copy of this?
That would be great, I'll, I'll make copies and mail it to them.
I just made ten, so there's plenty here.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make copies myself and mail it to them, because I'm really...
So, I just made ten, they're here on the table.
They're right here.
I don't know if Paul's got them.
One's fine, that would be great, so it's okay if I can send this to them, if I can.
Sure. Great, thank you.
The only other one thing would be, uh, space, space where, you know, if it's a Friday, uh, in the laptop, I guess, is the only computer that's in the office, I'd be dedicated to that, so, all of that, consider, start putting things together, we have to pounce on, uh, if you wanna meet again, I'm open to that, right now, I'm trying to get a roof on a twenty-by-forty building, and that's...
Easy.
I'm not, I'm not as young as I look.
All right.
Well, she should have went first.
Well, we're gonna have the...
Questions, any questions you have, compile them, uh, fine, send me an email, but, uh, again, I'm out of service where I'm at, a lot of times, so, uh, you know, I'll get back to you, abatements are the best things to do, instead of, you know, like, well, we'll look into it or something like that, uh, when appropriate, when it's a valuation change, because, uh, that starts that thirty-day time clock, again, gives me thirty days to respond back to it, or whatever, too. But yeah, I mean, if you have any questions, I just, just understand my end of it, I got more going on than I ever have in my life right now.
Okay.
And you, if you can include me, I would also offer some information.
She didn't hear you even talk?
What, what, Ben?
What was?
What?
I said, if you care to include me, I'm willing to offer what I can on this situation.
And this is just a list of the people that I've kind of compiled for now.
Oh.
And we'll give that to Ben, just so he has it, I mean, it's not like anybody's gonna make any move on anything, just let me know. And, like I said, some of the people I have emailed, um, copies of your letter to.
The person that I've been advised to...
To, um, okay, so we need to discuss after, we'll discuss with you, but Betty, since we put you right on the...
Okay, um, what I basically wanna, um, know is, when do you think we'll be starting the budgets?
Well, Sue's sending out the letter to the, um, department heads, so they'll get them, so they can review them, I think. In the letter, if you guys are okay with it, maybe they should be returned by, by the end of, middle of November, end of November?
And that's when they'll start coming to see you?
So, you want, you want them to stop submitting it by, just by the end of November?
Well, then we can really get, talk to them and get...
That's fine.
By the end of December, so that way we can get them out to, when do you guys usually start?
Well, last year was...
A month earlier than you used to, Christine, I'm not gonna be a wise guy, but just set everything back from what you were used to doing, a month, because that's what it was like last year.
I wouldn't see when I did it.
It's at my sooner, it all has to happen.
You must have the schedule from last year.
Yeah.
So that means they should have started in September.
But I've got the letter that I sent last year, so they can see when I requested it, but, you know, I mean, do you wanna give them a month?
Well, at least a couple of weeks probably, to get their paperwork and take...
Right, so if I send it tomorrow, then tomorrow's what, the twenty-fifth, so I could say by November fifteenth, or something to that, or later.
I think that's okay, right before.
Right before Thanksgiving, I'll, I'll figure out whatever the date is right before Thanksgiving.
So last year, we started at the beginning of November, so I, I, I think we're looking at January, after the holidays, when we start, because you're gonna meet with them first.
We do.
Okay, so you're, you will have started some of them, let's say, before the holiday, correct? You will have the budgets ready for us, a few, yeah, usually the, usually the small ones.
She's sending them tomorrow, yep.
Did you start on the fourth last year?
Yeah, yeah, that's when I got you.
Fourth of November?
Yeah.
That the budget committee started?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We started early last year.
Well, that's when we vote May, too, so we have to...
Right.
All right, so I can say the fifteenth, that's, gives them three weeks. That's plenty of time, I, I would think, and then we can go and start meeting with them.
I get you'll be able, be able to give me a better idea, after you start meeting, and how long your meetings are taking, being that it's a new process, well, not really a new process, due, but, um, because last year, we did, like, the planning board, appeals board, CMP, conservation.
The easier ones first, yeah.
Exactly, so...
Yeah, the ones that are pretty much...
If they'll come in to you first, then the harder ones usually with us come, come at the end.
Okay, now what, um, how would you like to see this process done this year? I mean, we've had some processes in the past where it was shouting match, which I intend on being standing on the table and shouting, or something, we're not doing this, I don't do shouting matches, that's what I tell you.
Thankfully.
No, I don't do shouting matches, no. I think, um, that if we're prepared, I'm trying to be prepared to start these meetings and lay down some, some, probably minor rules and regulations of how I'd like the board to react, is myself included, when we're not happy with the results of what we're, we're hearing, are you going, um, now they will be coming, these?
Yes.
Okay, having said that, who will be coming from the transfer station? How are you gonna do that, just so I know, like, not to bring up anything that's gonna take a long?
Well, at this point, who will be coming?
Yeah, I mean, Roy, Roy is not the manager, I don't wanna bring this up, but is he ever...
He is currently, yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know?
And still currently, that's right.
You will tell me who to call, is that correct?
Absolutely.
And this is my question, perfect, thank you.
Yes.
Is there any other suggestions you have for me?
I don't, I'm gonna try to, um, make sure that when we meet, that, um, Joey, the treasurer, can be involved, so if you do have questions and, and things that, you know, that'll be good for him and for us.
Yeah, absolutely.
And also, um, you know, I'd like to be there as many times as I can, um, if I come in a little bit late, um, so I'm not sure what night you're gonna pick, the other night, I can't, those Tuesdays.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask to, what, what night is not good, I mean, so, you've got Monday nights for this meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then, what other nights is the room not available?
I'm having some trouble with the connection.
Well...
Friday night is never good for anybody, so we have Fridays.
Um, I don't know if you want to do Wednesdays.
I mean, I'll ask the majority how they feel, but it's really gonna be... It's like the planning board has Thursday, not every Thursday, just the first Thursday of the month. Um, you have the tenth, you have a budget committee meeting on the tenth of six?
I do, I'm gonna bring them in, I wanna set them up.
I don't know how, when the department head meetings are gonna continue, I mean, you could choose a Thursday, like, second Thursday of the month, if you wanted to.
Christine, didn't you set a, a department head meeting for the seventeenth? I believe it was, right?
You can...
I think you, you said it for the seventeenth, the next department head meeting, which is a Thursday, correct?
I would also like to be able to make it easier for the, anyone who has to do the key thing, I don't wanna put somebody out for the key thing.
Well, that would be the thing, the only thing with a Wednesday, unless the, one of the...
Well, Thursday may be the best day, because you know what, someone can open it up and let us out, and we don't have to worry about interrupting somebody, I felt bad when people used to have to come down just to open the door, so let's go. Well, and now you can come in here, so it's not like you have to be out in the lobby, right? Excuse me? I said, now you can come in here, you're not out in the lobby, so if you come in at six on a Thursday, it's not a big deal.
That's right, because we would fit, we'll fit right around the table, even with Christine and three or four other people, even, so I think we're gonna, I'm gonna probably highly encourage Thursday for that reason.
Okay, and do you wanna do the, the second Thursday of the month? Because that's really the only...
It's gonna be every Thursday, huh?
Oh, every Thursday.
Once we start, we go week to week to week.
Then I have to go on Wednesday.
Oh.
Unless I have to change it a week, I can change it certain weeks.
Wow.
It's gonna go every week.
Right, right. Um, because now the planning board has the first Thursday of the month.
And then we have department heads, the third.
Third Thursday.
Thursday is the department head meeting.
Tuesdays, any good?
She said she can do Tuesday.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I mean, your budget committee meeting, I mean, I...
Wednesday, but, you know, again, you've gotta have somebody let you in, which...
Well, Christine, I, I'm...
If you're trying to select and come, they can, somebody will have a key.
Okay.
I mean, I can't be here till six, but you don't usually have it till...
Somebody let me, let myself in?
No, because you need a code.
Oh, my God, don't make it complicated, I'll, you know, I'll have the fire department, they're doing up, let me in.
There are strobe lights going on.
I'll leave you light as much.
Yeah, so, what time do you wanna do, have me, because, um, if Roy and/or... Well, Joy is gonna come to the mall, he'll have a key, so, I mean...
Hey, yeah, that's true, great, so somebody will come and let me in.
You can, are you gonna start at six, is that what you wanna do?
I would like to start at six, sometimes I hear them say they can't get here, but if it's only one, then we're gonna start at six, because sometimes they'll go for two hours or more.
Yeah, so I'd say six P.M. All right, every Wednesday.
Every Wednesday.
Beginning, oh, well, you're gonna have that first meeting, the tenth.
Yeah, that's...
So then after that, you're...
No, no, then in January, after the holiday, we'll start your budget, because they're not gonna be ready, so...
Oh, sorry.
I don't think they are, just pencil me in, starting the first week in January, if I can get one in in December, great, but I don't think that's gonna happen, you know what I'm saying? I don't think I'll get one in in December, do you, Chris?
Okay, every Wednesday at six, beginning in January.
Yeah.
I would start with December.
The week after the holiday, I just don't think, if they're ready earlier, then we'll just, you know, call one.
Everyone saw that one, right?
Because there's always a first now.
Yeah.
Is there any other suggestions for me to bring to them in my first meeting with them, to be helpful? Okay, I think everyone. Nobody's really, are you, you're the only newbie, you are only newbie?
Yeah, I was the other newbie, but they kicked me off.
I didn't need that.
Well, it's the truth. I was the second one, but I got the boot.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
Uh, yeah, I think Karina was too, yeah. No, Karina's on as an alternate.
She's an alternate.
Yeah.
Because she's sudden, she means... Yeah, and she'll come to every meeting.
So won't I, I just can't talk.
That's why, you're right, you're right to be it.
I know, I know your rules, Ms. Betty.
You know me.
I do, I behave for you.
Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, I've been known, I've been known myself.
She looks like she carries a mean left talk, I'll behave.
Excuse me, I'm just gonna go kind of a little bit out because I know Elaine has something for us and then we're gonna go into executive session. Normally I would do other business first, but I don't know how much longer you want to hang out with us, and we're gonna go to the section, so what?
Will we have other business afterwards too?
Yes, yeah, I just, no, but she has something.
You'll get other business now for me?
Yes.
Just for you?
Just for me, okay. Uh, the Boy Scout troop here in Lebanon wants to volunteer to clean up a cemetery. And there was a question about liability, my understanding is, and I have, uh, I sent a message on their Facebook page and I got a reply, they are covered under the Boy Scouts of America. And so if they're working at my house or anything else, they're covered because they're doing it as Boy Scouts. This is the Venture...
Club, Venture Club.
Venture Club, and one of the young men has asked...
That also, I think, uh, does that also cover their folks? You know, say somebody brings them to the...
The leader is with them, you know, that...
So it's just the leader and the scouts themselves?
Yeah, and I wanted to be real clear about it because I, I think that it was presumed that the cemetery committee was going to, uh, you know, be there and tending and guiding them. No, what they asked us for was a suggestion of a cemetery. We're done, bam. We suggest and they'll go and do their thing because they can, uh, get merit points and so forth.